Call the town council meeting, order for Tuesday, June 21st, 2016 at 7:05 PM. Start first with salute.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic through which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated, and justice for all.
Hold call.
Mayor Duty?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Armond?
Here.
Councilor Candelara?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Manna?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Motion approved in minutes of the previous meeting, June 7th, 2016, order pollution control authority in town council.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelara?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Just a point of order, Mr. Councilor Armond, I think you have to abstain.
Yes, I have to abstain, I abstain. Sorry about that.
Next is the move into the regular town council meeting, reports of boards and commissions, committee of boards and commissions, permanent project building committee?
Permanent project met last Monday, and they approved the final payment to tighten roofing on the TBS roof project. It went to the Board of Ed at last week's meeting, and they have approved the project. So now, the paperwork can be completed and sent up to the state so they can start reviewing the project for payment.
Economic Development Commission?
They have not met since their last meeting.
Park and Recreation Commission?
They have not met since our last meeting.
Police Commission?
Police Commission met on June 13th. In addition to the usual agenda two items I would mention, the federal highway safety program, Rampford received funding as part of the regional group, regional DUI, roving checkpoints. And the other thing is, the police commission decided, Lieutenant, read this correctly, if I'm wrong about this, decided to move the parking, no parking signs on merit drive on the school side, right, three signs on the school side, so they're going to only be on the restaurant side. And that, I think, was something not only that the rest, the order the restaurant wanted, but many of the residents of the street wanted, because it was causing them a lot of problems in terms of where people were parking way down in front of houses and in vehicles, in the way of people's driveways when they were picking up kids, so I think that was the compromise that was reached, and it sounds like everyone now is satisfied.
Fire Commission, they did not meet. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
There's no meeting until August.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Well, actually, we had our special meeting last week with the Town Council.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
That next meeting is on July 20th.
Lanning and Zoni Commission?
Lanning and Zoni met on June 16th, gave a public hearing on non-conformities, and did vote at that time, opposing public hearing to amend their regulations. They also completed a book on the site plan for 847 forest roads, and they'll be doing a small remodel in our center.
Thank you. Next is Town Managers' Report, update on bid for North Rampford High School, North Rampford Incommunitet School auditorium, carpet replacement.
Yes, you had asked that, I work with the superintendent of schools, so I've made contact with him and also spoke with Bill Chody, so that process is moving along. Bill was able to develop the bid specs, drop them off to Michelle Knockwood, she's putting together the package and try and get that out as soon as possible.
Next is update on cost of computer tablets.
Yeah, we don't have anything for you at the moment, other than we're working to deal with the Board of Ed, trying to get use of their iPads for you on a trial basis, potentially for the July meeting and August meeting, so that you can try them out and see if that type of model will work for our features and so forth, so that'll be forthcoming in July or August.
Well, that'll be fine.
Is there any problem with that when they get their things on an educational discount? Those are issues on acquisition for IT equipment for schools. Do they violate it in any way by allowing us to use their equipment?
I don't know the answer to that, I don't believe so, but I can follow up on their side, as just letting us borrow to try them out and then return them, I'm not sure that violates anything, but I can check.
I know that the manufacturers hold that pricing very dear, very closely, so I wouldn't want to compromise their ability to get equipment at a lower price.
Next is update on North Rampford Incommunitet School tennis court and memorial field project.
Yeah, very briefly, you know, some questions arose as to, you know, where the project is going and concerned about the actual construction, there are issues with people commenting that they think they saw the rebar, you know, that it wasn't done correctly, shouldn't be able to see it, and what in fact happened is plastic covering made marks that appeared to look like rebar, and that's not the case at all. So Kurt and Fran have both been onsite, talking with the contractor, they also seen that inspections have been done, and that everything is moving according to plan, so in addition to that, there was an accident rollover that came close to, an automobile coming close to the project, in the project zone and close to the surface, but not on it, so, you know, those things are not going to impact, have not impacted, everything is on schedule as far as I know, but certainly defer to Kurt and Fran.
Just a quick word on schedule, basically, the basketball court slabbed before, the tennis court slabbed before, I believe, about two and a half weeks ago, requires a 30-day cure time for even to paint on, so in the meantime, they'll be putting up the fence, doing, there's some perimeter asphalt and locks that have to be installed around there, but the goal will, right around the 4th of July, they'll be doing the painting, and that'll probably be a week to 10 days, so they're on schedule for the mid-July timeframe, which is in the, which is the original timeframe we talked about, it's in the agreement, the only one caveat is if you get a bunch of rainy days and then they pull it out a little bit, but hopefully continues the way it has been weather-wise.
And you've been satisfied so far with the work that has been done?
Absolutely, very satisfied, and just to follow up in terms of what Mike said, somebody made a comment, and again, we looked, Fran and myself, have been looking at it all along, we looked at it afterwards, and again, here's, it's plastic that made the lines, you know, we did a visual of that, we pretty much confirmed that. We also have inspections done by the design engineer, he's given us a letter, he does inspections of the post tension cables that are in there, making sure they're installed for the plan, in terms of the number, spacing, depth, and length, so, yeah, we're actually very pleased with the contract.
What type of warranty do we have?
25 VR.
25 VR?
Yeah.
And I'll just add that when those questions came up, Fran had contacted me, and both my son and I met him at 6 o'clock Friday morning out there, and I concur with what you've heard here tonight, so, and you'll see it on one of them, not the other, because the other was poured on a cloudy day, you pour that big of a pour on a sunny day, you know, you've got to, you put the plastic on it to slow down the curing, and for some reason, and we put it on, you know, slabs all the time, where the folds in the plastic are, leave a mark at the top of this, you know, and at the top of the concrete as it cures, and if you get out and walked around on that, you will see that those marks end where a sheet of plastic ended, about every hundred feet, they move left to right like a piece of plastic wood, and so, that's what the marks are, and it looks like a very good job.
Thank you. Next items, community events and presentations. Next item, citizen's statements, petitions, and correspondence. Next item is resignations and appointments, we have a resignation of Bill Chody from the East Shore Health District Director's Board of Directors. So you want to move that?
I'm moved to accept Bill Chody's resignation from the East Shore Health District Board of Directors.
Second.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelara?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Same.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to unfinished business discussion in action, review and discussion of nepotism policy.
Yeah, this one was brought up at last meeting, so it's on your agenda for discussion. I was able to get, you know, copies and policies from CCM through CCM on other states within Connecticut and then also outside of Connecticut, and gave that to Pat, and I think we're looking for sort of the best of both worlds, maybe a cut and paste, and looking at feedback from the council in terms of what's important, there are a lot of differences, but mainly it centers around conflict of interest and direct supervisory roles, I think, and how you word, how you word it, and how much verbiage you want to put into it, I think I defer to Pat on that, and certainly with the input of the council, how far you want to go with it.
It might be a good idea if we have a subcommittee, two or three, that perhaps encourage a couple of alternatives for the council to vote on, if you think we need it at all, that should be a little.
Yeah, I went on the Board of Ed website today, and the Board of Ed has a policy too, but I think everybody should have a copy of it, I think it's interesting that they out there have one, it was, it was from 2013, and I think the council members should have a copy of that as well, to see what the Board of Ed has.
If you're from Cleveland, Ohio, and some other place in Missouri, I could kind of throw you that.
Can I make a copy?
I'd love to.
So I'll jump in, I think we need one, I think that even though the Board of Ed has one, I think that they, they might want to read it and understand it, and.
No, but I think we should have, we should have a copy of it, see what it says.
Yeah. I read through all these, it's, you know, kind of interesting, you know, what some towns think are important and what some don't, and, but what I did see in here was something that I think that, again, this is just me, I think that, you know, we need to be firmer with elected officials, having, you know, whatever they call, I like the close relatives here, like those all the way out to like a first cousin or something, and most of them, but I think that, you know, and I couldn't find one in here, I think that we should, we need to look at, and if I'm by myself, I'm by myself, but at least I brought it up, I think we need to look at somebody like us sitting up here, or even, you know, one of us sitting up here, we're Michael's boss, it doesn't look good to me if one of our relatives got hired when we were evaluating Michael's contract salary or anything like that, so I honestly, you know, brought this up, I think that as elected officials, we need something more than, you know, and then we could look at like the husband and wives, and, you know, and they get in a lot of trouble, if you look at the news or look at surrounding towns, certainly husband and wife teams working in the same building, you know, a lot of them have been escorted out of the building and under arrest, and.
We have it in the news.
Hmm?
We have it in the news.
So at any rate, yeah, I don't know where the rest of you want to go with it.
Why now, you've been on the council a very long time, why now?
Just because, you know, a few things have happened that don't sit right with me.
Recently?
In the last couple of years.
We do run the risk of qualified people not getting jobs too, right?
Yeah.
I read the old policies, and all of them allow, for the exception of relationships, if the person's the most qualified of the applicants, so.
Right.
All they're trying to do then is make certain the person isn't in a direct supervisor support relationship, and move people if necessary, and that can do it. So that exception exists in all of these policies.
And just about everywhere it says that there should be full disclosure by relative.
I really felt that goes without saying.
And that, you know what, thank you, because I would have thought that would happen too, and so now I'm going to say something here that we'll have to defer to hit, but I've been on the council often on since 1989, and I've had things where, you know, and did you notice this too, because, you know, as soon as I brought this up, there was a lot of flack around town of, oh, well, Al built the fire training facility, did you notice that all 13 of them say the only exception is a bid process? Did you see that? Every one of them, a bid process is excluded, because it's a closed sealed bid, that, you know what, if I can come to town and say it was $75,000 and was qualified, that's fine. However, do you remember what my full disclosure was? Was a letter, and both town attorneys, because it happened in between the two, was a letter, read into the minutes in front of the camera. Go ask your Board of Ed members what full disclosure means.
But we don't have control.
Well, that's right, but if the town had something, they would have to follow it.
If it were an ordinance, right? It would have to be an ordinance.
After reading that, this wasn't followed.
Well, I just went on.
So full disclosure is disclosing it to the town, so maybe we just need to send a letter to the Board of Ed and explain to Scott and Don Wenicki that full disclosure means at a council, at a Board of Ed public meeting, whoever has the conflict is going to state it to the townspeople, and it's going to be in the minutes, okay, and that alone is enough to deter somebody that might have something that the perception of doesn't look good, okay, if the perception doesn't look good, you may not want to go on camera and say, yeah, this is going to happen, but I'm okay with it, so that's my only thing. So I defer to, what does full disclosure mean when you're an elected official?
The charter requires that if you have an interest in a contract, you have to disclose that to the council, put it in the message, and also accuse yourself and then subsequent votes or discussion on that issue.
So would that be the same for a Board of Ed elected official?
Yes, but I'd like to see, they had pretty good policy here, I haven't seen this.
Right. So it's followed, it's sensible disclosure.
Are those employees hired by the Board of Ed or hired by the superintendents? They're not approved by the Board of Education?
See, I don't, I don't know that.
So does that, full disclosure doesn't come?
I think teachers are definitely approved, are hired by the Board of Ed, I don't know about like non-certified. I don't, yeah, I agree, I think it's only teachers and administrators that are actually hired by the Board of Ed.
Who would they give full disclosure to, Scott?
No.
They're not going to give it to the Board of Education, they're not hired by the Board.
That's my only question.
Well, their position is not, their position, the board doesn't have to vote that that's
the person that gets hired for anything except the certified staff and administrators, but they're still an employee of the board, and if that board is also evaluating the superintendent who has the ultimate decision as to whether the person gets hired or not, I think that's the point that Al is trying to make on that, is that ultimately the buck does stop there, so it's not so much that the board actually approves the person being hired, it's still full disclosure to say that that position that was posted and everything else, whatever the conflict may be, or whatever the issue is.
So in the future, you know, maybe it's a memo to somebody that they should bring that disclosure to the Board of Education, but as of now, from what I see on Board of Education, personnel series, employee relatives, I don't see anything where the board has to be notified, if it's a non-certified position, that's the only thing.
Well, I think that full disclosure depends on what it has to happen.
Where?
In the first paragraph.
Number one.
Number one, it says full disclosure.
It just says anybody employed by the board, it doesn't matter if it's a cafeteria custodian, they're not qualifying what job, they're just saying anyone employed by the Board of Ed by blood or marriage, they have to have full disclosure of the relationship to the potential employee, it doesn't matter what position the employee is holding.
As this relates to the law, those sample ones that we were given to examine, this is a very original, because this goes out to fourth degree, but most of the other communities are only going out to third degree, so if this is followed, this is actually a far more original.
I agree with that, and when you read some of them, they're pretty wishy-washy. Say as long as they're followed. Like I said, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I just don't, you know, I don't think that, you know, as an elected official voting on, you know, I didn't see anything anywhere that said the guy's directly under an elected official, you know, there was, nobody has touched that, you know, so, but that's what bothers me, there's nine of us up here, so. I've stated it, it bothers me, so.
Well, the only person that is under us is Mike.
That's correct.
So would you, so you want to discuss perhaps adopting something similar to the town that the board has?
I think it also comes down to enforcement.
Yeah, that's what.
I mean.
Yeah, I think it's enforcement.
This is already here.
Right, it's already here, but how do you enforce it? Because it's happening, it's happened, and this is already in place, and it still happens.
Tell the administration to reinforce this, you know, to say, look, don't forget. Yeah, it's a reminder. Just remind, just be aware that this is our policy. This happened, we know it happened, please don't let it happen again. Right.
But Al, you're still saying that the.
But the town doesn't have any.
The town doesn't have one.
The town doesn't have one.
However, on the town side, I think it'd be a little more difficult too, because we give, you know, and every council I ever sat on, we give the town manager a tough time on anybody he hires, you know, and five of us could vote to not hire somebody, you know, or on the, you know, so, so I don't see that, you know, somebody's wife, sibling, the kids up here needed a job, and Michael gives it to them because we give Michael a great big raise, so I don't see that happen, you know, so I don't think that's, I don't think that, that just can't happen with what we do in this room.
A policy like this would just say, look, you know, upon my application to the town, you should know that my relative also holds this position in town, otherwise we wouldn't know, so then Mike's aware of it, potentially we're aware of it, and he's the most, he or she's the most qualified candidate that we get, and we can consider that also, but we're just concerned about somebody.
But you know, I mean, I do, and I think it was you, Chris, you know, when I, when I brought it up at the, at the beginning, you're like, oh, no town has that, he found this so simple in like an hour, and there's 13 of them around us that have it, so I didn't invent the wheel on it.
Oh, I know you did.
Nepotism is a big deal in municipal buildings.
I can see, it's tougher in small towns too.
Yeah.
Well, is this, is this something that needs to be a question on a town application, an employment application, do you have, are you related, any familial relationship with
An employee.
Anyone who's an employer or elected official or no?
Yeah, there was one town, was it Gandober, one very small town, just said, no relative of an elected official can work for the town, and there was no out, but most of them had an out of full disclosure, and I think, I think, you know, full disclosure is good, if you've got to say it on camera to the whole town, and then walk around town, you know, you know, I think that that carries a little weight.
But if this has been violated.
Well, that'd be the Board of Ed's issues.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to go, I'm looking to go forward.
Got it.
And, and you know what, when I brought this up, we didn't have this thing from, the Board of Ed has a very strict one. So it's just up whether you guys think we need it on the town side or not.
It should be disclosed.
I think it should be.
And lying on an application is usually grounds for termination.
It can be a part of the application, if George had suggested, it's a good idea.
Well, just have a question, are you related to any?
Elected official.
Any elected official or other town lawyers in town?
Yeah, and then we don't even need a ballot.
Then we wouldn't need a ballot.
That would take care of that.
Well, it would identify it.
Yeah.
It would identify.
And here's the thing, we, you know, we are a small town, so we don't want to get rid of, we don't want to get rid of everybody in town because they're related to someone, so, you know, I'm not looking to do that, there's just not enough people, you know, and people are leaving Connecticut all the time, there's less and less people, so if we have somebody.
The only people left are our family members.
Right. One of us is going to have to turn the lights out.
It might as well be a cousin, right?
So Pat, would you do that? Put it on the application?
I'm sorry.
Would you put that on the application?
Sure.
You know what, that'd be a start.
Okay, so then, so then let's say, effectively speaking, it goes on, that question goes on the application, and then the supervisor goes to the town manager or the superintendent, right, and then if we have to be made aware of it and make some sort of call, then we do, right? I mean, that would be the hypothetical.
You could give the manager the power to waive it.
Right.
Say you got a super employee, you got a chance, and he's got a cousin working somewhere in town.
Right.
You say they're losing, and they put a case before the manager, some of the ordinances or policy, Board of Ethics make that decision, we don't have a Board of Ethics here.
Yeah.
Do you have one?
There's.
They really don't meet.
Because there's never any.
When there's business.
When there's business, they would define them all.
I don't think there should be a.
Part of the look downtown.
I shouldn't get into policy decisions, that should be elected officials through here, but I don't think we should have a definite policy that prohibits any relative from working this, you might cut off some real good talent, and why should that person who's losing a job lose that opportunity just because they have to live here?
It's fair.
But by the same token, if there's a portion of the application where they are asked to disclose it, and they're signing it under, with an understanding, that being less than truthful is grounds for termination.
You just went out. You can make that change.
Did that work for you?
How you draft a policy, then we can show it, but I think we ought to do just like policies, if this is a policy, the town rather than the ordinance, because the ordinance is too hard to change.
Yeah.
Next item is review of proposed hiring freeze.
Yeah, council wanted to revisit this again, so I just took the liberty of crafting a suggested motion. I think it was suggested to tie it to the term. And it's your call if you want to, you want to do that or not. I'm not sure where the.
Why are we tying it to the term?
It was, it was just, it was floated as, was in my notes.
Well, just question whether or not it's tied to the term. My request was, it was not. It was just, hiring freeze was imposed, and I thought it continued, but out of an excess of caution, suggested, well, we adopt it.
Yeah.
But to put a sunset provision in it could very easily slip through a crack, and come December 2017, we may not have intended to, or that council may not have intended to remove the policy, and it's gone.
Yeah, you can just strike that and just leave it at, you reaffirm, I guess, or reinstitute this?
I think any council at any time could, could change a policy that was adopted by a previous council.
Right.
So I don't think we're tying anybody's hands, but at the same time, I don't really think it makes sense to adopt the policy that has a sunset provision in it, which is just arbitrarily set at the end of each council term.
I was the one that asked the question, and I said, you know, I say, we does hiring freeze continue on? And our question is, if the new council comes in and wants to do away with the council with the hiring freeze, they hope to do away with hiring freeze.
Right.
But, you know, I have no problem with, you know, continuing on until the next council or whoever wants to remove it in case they have to hire somebody.
Right.
That's fine. So I don't think much more has to be done with it, I mean, it's just a question.
I mean, so, it's still in place.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
And so do I.
So, yeah.
And what we did was anytime somebody, you know, somebody left, they had to become, come here to the floor to say, okay, are we, you know, when we put it in here, we thought maybe the economy would get better sometime. We put it in here because we said, you know, hey, it's bad out there, it's a lot easier to not fill or eliminate a empty chair, rather than somebody that has a mortgage and kids and all that. So that was how, that was the thought when we, when we implemented. And, you know, we still hired people when they, you know, when somebody left, we just had a discussion about, okay, do we really, do we, do we need this position, and can we afford it? So I think that if it's still in place, that's really what needs to be done, and I don't think we need to do anything else.
Make the distinction or clarify for me the.
This is all, this, because this is talking about all new positions, and.
Are you talking about?
So that means creating new positions, and what you were just talking about was if someone left an existing position.
Yeah, we had a hiring freeze. When we put it in, it was all positions.
Right, so that, I just.
Okay, cause you, cause there's another, another pending retirement coming, as you know, and it's in your agenda for.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to come ask permission.
That'll be, that'll be item nine C.
It's not marked.
Right.
Now, Al, did you need permission to retire?
That's nine B.
Next item is Memorial Day Parade Planning 2017.
Yeah, I think this was Council Armond's item that he wanted, and we held it so that he can be part of that discussion.
Well, it was unfortunate we didn't have a rain date for our last parade, but in the planning stages for next year's parade, it would be good for us to have a rain date. Then when would that be, what would be a good idea for that rain date?
Wouldn't it have to be the succeeding weekend, so that people could participate and be there? You're not gonna have it on Tuesday or Wednesday.
We can have a rain date whenever we so choose.
You're not gonna have it that next Monday, are you?
You'd have to have it on Saturday or Sunday.
Well, if the original one was on a Sunday, if you move the original parade to like Sunday of that weekend, then you could have.
That's what a lot of towns do.
Right, they have it on Saturday or Sunday as their original date, and then if there's a rain date, they can still have time within that weekend to do it, so that's.
In the absence of having the rain date, we're, you know, it was a thought that we would have it on the Fourth of July, but we couldn't do that, but.
Well, part of, part of the discussion on that, that we had last week was, it's, we would then end up with two parades in the same fiscal year, and the whole cost factor that's not budgeted.
Right. So.
So why don't we think about a Saturday or Sunday, so you have the Mondays still there for parade dates?
I like, I like Rosa's idea, move it back to Sunday, after rains on Sunday, you do it on Monday.
I mean, just so you, it's still within the same weekend, and you have.
Sure, yeah, sure.
So I don't know who organizes the Memorial Day parades. Is that a function of the town, or is it?
We work in conjunction with, with the VFW and representatives, so it's through my office, and Anthony's a big part of that, and Gina, and so we, we hold meetings in the police department as well, and various municipal staff brings that all together. So, you know, throw that into the works for, as a backup plan for.
If we do it on a Sunday, we have to check with churches though.
With the church?
Could be a problem if you're blocking.
Staging areas, parking. In San Monica Church Park, they wouldn't want you to do that on a Sunday.
Well, they only have one mass, so the parade is later, you know, it might not be a nine o'clock assembly, ten o'clock parade, you might have an eleven o'clock assembly and a twelve o'clock parade on a Sunday or something, because they only have one mass there, so, I mean, that's, so that's all part of planning.
That's actually a good question, do we, since we didn't have it in Northford Side, do we have it in the Northford Side next year, or does it go back to North Ramford?
No, it comes back down to North Ramford. You can't mess with that.
And then you have, then you have the Zion Episcopal Church that you gotta deal with.
Right.
Yeah, but you can just, yeah, you can just have a later.
They just have one mass down there?
Yeah, but that's all part of the discussion that you can have now, planning to see once if that does work. Yeah, it's just.
He's cleaning it this Saturday. Stay away from the church schedule, people at church on Sunday morning.
Right, so then following Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday, then Monday.
Saturday or Monday.
Of the same weekend.
I think Saturday, we're gonna run to a lot of problems with churches on Sunday.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just.
Cause you're basically surrounded by churches on the way.
So, all right, so Saturday with Monday as the.
And just advise the churches not to schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next item is resolution of assessment deferral program.
Yeah, we had this, we had the public hearing last, last meeting, there was one comment, as you know, from a resident, and this is ready before, I did not receive any other comments from, from council, so I would suggest, you know, Dave Ambrose is here as well, if there are any follow-up questions, but I hope that we could move this and implement this this evening. Don Capelli was the sole resident comment, and he was obviously, you remember, favorable to that.
Let's suggest the motion, and if they want to move the motion.
I'll move it now, therefore be resolved in accordance with section 12 dash 65D, et cetera, sequence of the North Ramford General Statutes, 1958 provision, as amended to Town Council, Town and North Ramford hereby designate all territory within the town of North Ramford as a rehabilitation area, and establishes criteria for eligibility of real property within the designated rehabilitation area for fixing of assessments during the period of rehabilitation, and for deferral of increased assessments attributable to such rehabilitation as detailed in the attached documents, subject to review of the Town Attorney's Office.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Kandelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is review of May 5th, 2016 dispatch report.
Yes, unfortunately, this report was not available for the packet when it was mailed out, so it came re-electronically, and I think it's also at your desk, and it obviously involves the May 5th incident, which we had previously met in another meeting, so that's, I know Lieutenant Ripa is here, should you have any questions, but the police commission dealt with this in terms of their, obviously in terms of investigation, their report, so I'm not sure if you have any questions or where you want to take this, but it's there for your review.
Another question, we'll be here just here then.
Well, this was also emailed to us.
Yeah, it was emailed.
Like last week.
I don't yet.
Yeah, it's about a week ago.
Yeah.
Don't feel bad, I didn't see it till I called. I spoke to Gina.
Oh, yeah, it was emailed.
Yeah, it's an email, I believe it was an email from Gina, that, and then it said there would be hard copy at our desk.
What was that, that email that I saw today, I don't know what it was, was that about this too?
Uh, yes, tied to that, if you refer to the complaint.
The complaint?
Yes, I believe it is, although it's not specifically stated, I'm inferring that it's related to that.
So on something like that, can, can we, as a town, can we, you know, through FOI, find out who complained?
We can request here, okay. All they can do is say.
Part of the report though, I mean, isn't it gonna be a public report? So, you know, when that's issued.
I'm not sure if agencies reveal the source of the complaint. I'm not sure, we can ask, and I can, I can go through that and do that, and ask, but I don't know if they're under any obligation to, to reveal that or not.
I mean, left you read this and see that the chief had no issues with anything here, I mean, I, I, you know, I know that, you know, you can't do anything about it, but it'd be awful interesting to know who, who felt they should file a complaint on something that our own chief thinks is a non-issue.
What is the nature of the complaint?
We don't even, we don't know.
We don't have any.
We didn't see the complaint.
Well, it indicated that we can be represented by an attorney.
Yeah.
How do you even counsel, uh.
How do you?
Discuss this with your counsel when you're not apprised of what the nature of the complaint is?
See, I read that, that the chief of police could be represented by an attorney, not us.
Yeah, I understand that, but the same question holds out. How do you answer a complaint? You're walking in without any knowledge whatsoever, how could that happen?
Well, I, I think the chief is in the process of trying to find that out. He explained to me that he's placed a call to this gentleman, Mr. Roof, and has not made contact. Apparently Mr. Roof is out of the office this week, so makes it hard to get any information at all.
And the police department, as far as we can tell, is closed this second.
Yeah, if you read, if you read those letters, they're definitely a letter from the fire chief, who basically states that based upon today's interaction with listening to 911 audio, the initial and secondary call, he's satisfied with it.
But that's only locally though, if somebody rush it to state's attention, then it's a total different.
The, the police department, as I understand it from this, had an internal investigation and.
That was.
Closed that out, taking no action. So that's closed.
Well, they took some action, they sent him for retraining and stuff like that, so there was some action.
As I said, well, excuse me, there's no disclosure, this retraining, yes.
So, I mean, from what I see is, it's covered there, you know, but we don't know what the state wants.
Right.
So does anyone else care who turns in? Or not?
I think we need to.
I mean, if it's FOI-able, we might as well.
We should know.
I mean, and if it's not, they'll just tell them, oh, this is a.
But how can, I don't, I, yeah, it's not, it's not, but how can you have an anonymous complaint?
Why would we have to FOI them? Why can't other departments tell us?
Cause he doesn't know, does the state?
But he's inquiring.
Yeah, he hasn't heard that yet.
Right, he hasn't heard that yet.
Why, why do we not just ask the department head to make that information?
I think he's trying, but he couldn't get ahold of anybody.
That's, that's in the past, I'm talking about the future. When he finds that out, can we add information? Why would, why would we do an FOI?
We'll find out if we have to, based on what the person from the state tells the chief.
Correct.
Then we'll go, yeah, then we'll go forward.
I suspect the chief will find out. I suspect.
Good call.
Next item is discussion on future plans for the North Ramford Police Department.
Yeah, so this is the follow-up from last week's meeting to, in the discussion as to, you know, where, where do we go? You've heard the, the information, the presentation, the report, it was a pretty, pretty lengthy report, and I think they did a pretty good presentation in terms of the assessment of deficiencies, it's, where does the town, where does the council want to go with it from here? And I think we, we should probably discuss options, or discuss if you want to do, so I don't, you know, I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Right, I mean, I believe, you know, speaking as a member of the commission, you know, which consists of, you know, the North Ramford Fire Department and Fire Commission, the Police Commission, the BOE and Town Council members, you know, there's a couple of options I think that we need to have evaluated, one of them being nothing, you know, we decide that we can't afford to move forward with drawings or, you know, to find out what our options may cost. Another option would be the renovation and expansion of the current facility, which could also include company for ambulance, which we could then sell to help offset whatever costs are incurred, or build a new station, perhaps across the street on the Moody property. I think, you know, I think it's, my impression that the commission would like to move forward and get drawings, you know, send out a request for proposal, I guess you would call it, Mike, right?
Yeah, sure.
To have some drawings developed, so we can further evaluate our options, see what they cost, see what reimburse, reimbursables we could be eligible for with each option. I think that would be where we're at this point. You know, it's up to the town council to move forward with that.
You have money for this, right?
We have, we do have money set aside, a hundred thousand dollars, which the drawings wouldn't cost that, for.
Mike, what services are under consideration for regionalization with departments in the area? Other than the PSAP, what else is under consideration?
I'm not, top of my head, I'm not sure, other than PSAP is the.
Well, they mentioned prisoner watch.
Well, potentially, yeah, I mean, the, the relationship could develop beyond just, you know, the PSAP and dispatching calls to, you know, prisoner watch and hosting and so forth, but that, those are, those are down the road, I think. Beyond that, I, I don't know that any other communities are, they, they talk about sharing equipment in public works and a few other things.
The term down the road, what are we talking about?
I, I think you want to make sure that you're up and running, doing the core function of a PSAP in terms of, of calls before you want to, sort of walk before you run, and say six months a year, then you evaluate and say, does it, does it make sense? This, this is working, does it make sense, can you handle any other services? And does it make sense for us? Maybe, maybe it doesn't for North Ramford's sake, we don't want to do that. You know, PSAP is, is it calls or it?
You know, from the Public Safety Communications Committee, I would say that the PSAP piece is probably at least six months or so. I mean, the first step, well, first of all, we, the committee needs to meet again with Ramford, and hopefully we can do that in July, but then there's gonna have to be, if we, if we're gonna go that route, and hopefully we are, there's gonna have to have to be a written agreement between this council and the RTM in Ramford. in Bramford. That would be the first step. And then the next step is the process to apply to the state in terms of having a regional PSAP and getting that $250,000. I mean, there's a whole procedure that we would have to follow. So my guess is it's at least six months down the road before we could actually have a regional PSAP. And that's the only part that you would be able to get the, the monies for.
And it should be noted also, it's my understanding that if we do do a, engage in a multi-town PSAP, whether it be Bramford or somebody else, we're still going to have a console in our facility, whatever we do, for redundancy for data storage and for backup in case some, whatever partner's system goes down, then we can take over. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's one of the, yeah, one of the thoughts in terms of built-in redundancy.
Well, did they get a brand-new console today?
We did, I heard.
Fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty, yeah.
But the local council, console does not need to be in the police department, it needs to be somewhere, or it doesn't need to be in the police department.
Okay. I think that we should have a clear direction as to where we're going, before you hire any architect to do anything. The only thing that, that I would support is if we were going to get someone to go in there and tell us what the Band-Aid effect is. You know, it's going to take a year or two, you know, so if the stairs are illegal and the septic backs up and they need, you know, I mean, we had everything from the, with the one guy there, I don't know whether you believe him or not, but he said that we have six cells, we only need three. And so if you took, so if you had a guy that went in for a, you know, a low-budget rendition, architect's rendition that understands police departments, and so he could take, you know, fix the staircase, we fix the septic...
But I would also throw in some security issues.
And we do the, what's this?
I would, I would throw in some security issues, a person look at the Sally Port and the booking room.
So, the, so, yeah, and I, you know, I don't understand what's wrong with the Sally Port, because it was state-of-the-art in 1994 when we remodeled this thing. So, you know, I mean, nineteen ninety-four to now isn't that long.
But they got, they got problems in the locker rooms, stuff like that.
Right, so you look at those things, because here's where I'm coming from. There's less people in the state of Connecticut, there's less people in North Bramford. So we don't need, we don't need to build...
How many less people? What do you mean, less people in North Bramford?
Well, I know one thing, there's 2,500 less school kids, less children in town than there was in the mid-seventies.
Yeah.
So there's 2,500 less kids there, that's a fact.
Okay.
Everything else is hypothetical.
But couldn't...
Okay, but so I don't know where all these old people are, if, you know, and we have lots of, so we had, so here's the thing, if we'd gone up and in seventy-five, there were 11,000 people with about 4,400 students, okay?
We're talking about...
So now, if we're down 2,500 students and you guys want to claim we're 14,000 people, we have 6,000 more adults living in town?
Well, I don't understand.
Doesn't add up to that.
I don't understand.
But I don't want even to go there, I just want to tell you that we're not, you know.
Okay.
We don't have $10 million, like the show said the other night, for a PD station, we don't need to expand it, there's less people here.
But, but are you willing to have, are you willing to consider somebody that would go in there and look at the evidence room, look at the booking room, look at that area where they had, where the...
But again, in that show, the evidence room could be in Bramford or in another town. So you don't know all that. So if you want to do something in the short term, you know, we definitely have to fix the pipe and stuff that's in the, you know, the basement, so that the, you know, like I said, pumping the septic system is just crazy.
Yeah, but there, but, but, you know, if you went in there and looked at those locker rooms and you looked at that main room where the...
But what's a locker? What's a, what's a locker? Ripped it out, put a new locker in.
But I think, I think that we need somebody to go in there, why can't we take some of that?
But we can take six cells out, we can take three cells out.
Okay, so...
I can have that rule.
Why can't we, they'll get some professionals in, win and look at some of those areas of concern and come back to us and say, you know, these are the things that would at least make it livable.
That's, so then...
That's your mandate.
So then our mandate of purge out. I mean, we don't have...
That's the mandate.
We don't have just a staircase or just a septic issue, we have efficiency issues, we have safety issues involving the officers, we have safety issues involving the public heavy.
Yeah, and the, and the PD is doing an awesome job with that building every day.
Okay, very good. So now we're, you know, our commission was charged to assess the needs of the town, we started with the police department, this is what we brought to you, you know, we brought the study to you. Fortunately, we didn't have to pay 15,000 bucks for it, that was a good thing.
And just remember, you get what you pay for.
Okay, so nonetheless, we got, but we got, we got a good deal.
Get something for free?
So are you, okay, anyways, so...
Because here's the other thing, you know, you got a cop, a retired cop from Southington that has 80,000 people in it, and he wants us to build a station, something similar to they have?
Nobody suggested that either.
What are you smoking?
A, nobody suggested that, and B, nobody suggested.
No, but that's what his mentality was.
I don't know what, I don't know what his mentality was, all I know is...
He grew, he'd come out of there for all those years.
Salesman, he's a salesman.
But we're just saying...
Some of my concerns, I mean, a few months back, our assessor was here, we lost, what, 1.5 million on our tax rolls? And what, in two years or so, our debt service comes down. Since I've been on the council, we've been operating at, what, six or seven million in debt? And we can't operate during budget time, we're cutting a $1,500 uniform from the police department. Right, at the very same time. We're cutting soft from Public Works, we're cutting, we're cutting overtime for police, right? And now... Okay, well...
Well, it sounds like to me that in six months, we'll have greater clarity on how the police department's going to operate.
Here's the concept, we actually, actually hold on and don't spend money and possibly lower taxes and maybe make North Bramford attractive, where some of these houses we'll sell, get built in Northford, and it brings more people here, while area, other area towns are going up on the taxes.
I still think though, that we could address some of the safety and security issues that occur, that are occurring on a daily basis in that police facility.
Mike, you worked in that building, I'm dying here.
Well...
So I didn't work in that building.
No, they do have issues in the male locker room, they do have some septic issues, but I think, you know, they put, I don't know if there's a backflow preventative valve that would stop the septic from coming into the building now, or not.
Tear it up and the pipes.
Along, along with addressing the pipe issue, you know?
The supply with the...
But if, if it was me and I was doing it, I'd take the evidence room out from where it is, I'd expand the booking room into that area of the evidence room, I'd move the male locker room into that evidence room, it's certainly big enough to support both those functions, all you need is a little more room in your booking room. And I'd, I'd either, you know, temporarily move the evidence outside into some steel storage containers, or build a, build an addition on that'll...
Build a little addition for the evidence room.
Yeah, the evidence room, maybe a little Sally Port.
I think you have problems with evidence in the container.
Alarm it, alarm it.
No, not for, not for security, for atmosphere and for deterioration of materials.
Put some heat in there.
Certainly looks somewhere else.
What I would like to do is suggest, okay, either, you know, I'd like to know whether we're going to do nothing, or whether we're going to go ahead and find somebody to come in with drawings and tell us what you guys are talking about will cost us, to address the needs of the police department. You know, it's either that or we do nothing.
I, I think, I think you're ruling out a new building, that, that's not going to happen.
Okay.
Four years, four years, you might lose the biggest taxpayer in town, which is fire.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I mean...
Right there.
But what about hiring somebody just to do, to look at some of those areas?
And I would, you know, if you're going to select the committee or whatever, you know, select the committee and look at the areas of deficiency, you know, number them.
Well, that's what we already did, that's what the DPC...
Well, we can...
No, you're, you're batting, you're batting a thousand here, you're not, you're not saying, I need to fix the evidence room, I need to fix that locker room, I need to fix the pipe underneath, I need the stairway compliant with ADA going downstairs.
That's what...
So...
Those are areas you have to do, you can't say, I want to refurbish as new, you can't do that.
Well, that's not what we're saying, we're not saying that, we're saying...
Okay, I want to...
Okay, so you crossed out the building, the building, you crossed out refurbishment, now you're into what the meat and meat and potatoes of the whole incident is, you know, we're addressing, we're addressing the critical areas that need to be fixed.
And then maybe we're, we're good for, we can get grants, maybe we can get, you know...
You're not going to get anything.
Well, you don't know.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are all experts, Ben, but nothing's been done with the facilities since the seventies.
You're lucky you could get, thinking forty, what, forty-seven percent for the school buildings? There's not a police department in the state that rebuilt their police department and they got it.
Okay, so then we do nothing.
I'd like a clear understanding of what we're going to do with the police department before we start spending money on facilities for the police department. So, you know, it's easy to characterize that as doing nothing, but I think it's a common sense approach to spending money. Don't spend money until you know there's a need for what you're spending the money on. Right now, all I know is we are talking to neighboring towns about regionalizing services, that may come to nothing, or it may be significant. Whatever the results of those discussions are, I would hope we're going to know within a year. We're talking about a facility that we're going to build and hopefully use for 30 to 40 years. I don't want to spend money wildly just to find out that we put on an addition or added a room or some other facility within this building, that's totally useless to us. Why would we do that?
Okay, I mean, so then what are you suggesting we do then?
We need to know...
Find out what we're doing with regionalization, get some sense of where that's going, and with that information, then make a decision on what facilities we need and what studies we should commission.
Okay, just so we know that with the discussions on regionalization that we're engaged in right now with Bramford at the moment, does not affect the condition of the building, it does not have an effect on that. These, the conditions that we're trying to address, this committee is trying to address, is not affected by whether we do or do not do a multi-town PSAP.
But then, they, these conditions are not brand-new.
Absolutely.
They're not, right now, right now, a present emergency, these are, these are things that if they're six months, addressed six months down the road, which is apparently the timeframe for some of this regionalization, is, is really just a discomfort for everybody who's been putting up with this for years.
Okay, so then the only reason, let me just clarify that the only reason why we're bringing this to the council level right now is because that's in the, that's the step the committee is at, that's all. It's not, it was not a part of any other timeline or timeframe or not based on some emergency, these issues have been going on in this police department for years.
So I just hear, I just hear a suggestion to pause. The committee's, the committee's work is certainly commendable, you did a great job
in getting that study done for no cost to the town was significant. That doesn't mean that the file should be closed and thrown away, it will be just as meaningful six months or a year from now as it is today. But money expended today is not going to be replaced if we find that it was spent for something we can't use. That's my point, and it's not just the PSAP we're considering regionalizing, if we can regionalize other facilities or services, we certainly have to consider that for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Okay.
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, I think we're being a bit rash to make a decision to expend funds for a facility that we don't have a full handle on exactly how much facility we need.
Nope. The design is, we're not talking about bonding, we're not talking about building a new building or anything, we're just talking about the drawings that would accommodate what needs we have.
And you're talking about extending up to $100,000.
Wow, for where, where does, where's that?
I don't know.
Who said $100,000?
That was the number you used.
Yeah, I said there was available.
No, available, we're talking about just drawings, how much would drawings cost for this, Mike?
It, it's hard to say, Dan, I, I mean, Counsel Arman, I would say that it's an unknown until you get, until you put it out there.
That's what all we're suggesting.
Right, but I, I hear what Counsel Fawnan's saying is, I, I think you're looking at trying to prioritize or trying to get a feel for whether or not this PSAP is going to be a component of that, to know, and then a sort of a rule-out, right? Rule out the PSAP whether it's in or out, and then you're left with, okay, that's, what does that represent? 200 square feet within the building, maybe?
Right.
Okay, you, you take that, plus what Counsel Rose said about the jail cells, and then you're, you're, so you're carving up space, but I think you're right, you're going to need professional services to say, a reconfiguration, Mayor was saying it, you know, move, move around, I mean, architect engineer is going to come around with the help of the, the department to say, what is efficient? So I think you want to remove those liabilities and improve efficiency, and I think you've got, you're on to, on track here to do with the low-cost alternative, set that whole new building aside, eight, 10 millions out the window, but you're looking at something that you can manage and afford in that, again, that, that debt service, or what, what you do, you do the, the staircase, is it a staircase, or does the code require you an elevator? You know, that, those are things that I would defer to a professional who does this and find out what you need. But I think, I think it's, ruling out is, is a prudent thing to do, and I think we can get with Bramford to find out whether we're going to play ball or not pretty, pretty soon. I think we can do that within the next three months. I would hope, I don't, you know...
Well, let's make sure we don't do it when we revisit this.
Yeah.
Well, so it just stays on the agenda under unfinished business and as the...
Is it at any time?
As the Public Safety Committee meets with Bramford, and if something comes up in the next couple of months, it's on the agenda and we just keep addressing it. I mean, at that point in time, we'll have more information and then we can move forward with it.
Everybody's behind you, we know it's needed, we know it has to be done.
I mean, you identified some of the barriers we've talked about.
Those have been here in this for the last twenty years.
The big question is, you know, what, what are we looking to do? You know, so and I think if we could, if we as a council can come to terms with what we're willing to do, I mean, then you could go, go forward with that, you know? You could say, okay, bring, and you know what, I don't want it, so I don't want to be like misquoted, I was quoting a retired Southington police officer saying, you have six cells, you only need three. I'd love to hear from our police commission and our guys, the guys running it every day, what they think about that, but, so I think we bring them into the room. And they, you know, I mean, I'm at, okay, let's fix it up and, and do it right, and put an elevator in and...
Make it compliant.
And make it compliant, and make it functional, and do that, so that's where I am, but that's the rest of you have to get there.
You know what, then, one of the things I should share with you though, is I have the result, we have a report from the police union and from the police commission, I can bring that to the next meeting, I can give you copies of those, of what, we tabulated those surveys, so that would be helpful.
You know what, I don't do that.
You don't what?
Come sit in the room, tell me to my face what you want, I'll respect it, okay? Write down a report, that, you know, that's mess of a looney. So, come sit in the room, the police commission, the police union, everybody, tell us what you need over there, we decide how much we're willing to raise taxes to give them.
I agree with you there, I mean, that's a very good point, Al, I must say, you know, it's very difficult to try and compile all this information and try and develop a good, clear focus when it's, we have an absence of the BOE when it comes to the schools, so we have an absence of, you know, the commissioners for the different departments, you know, it's very hard to get them in the room, and it's made it very difficult. I mean, we're just advocating for them and the citizens.
I mean, for me, I would much rather hear from our own guys than a retired guy from Southington.
I just did hear from one of our own guys, and I'm thrilled that, you know, I got some specifics.
Yeah, and Mike, Mike is telling us that, you know, you can move a few things around and do this and do that and, and make it work, and it'd be a lot less than 10 million.
Okay.
Next is...
Clarification, question, timing, when do you want, do you want them here for the next meeting, or, or...
I, I think we need to get more information.
Yeah, we can't do anything.
Pursue the regionalization, and let's get some answers to that.
That might be, that might be four, five, or six months down the road.
Maybe three, right?
We don't know, it depends.
It depends on...
No, I mean, for a joint meeting between like the police commission and the council.
We need to have a more definitive answer from Bramford before we do that, the joint meeting.
Okay.
That's all right.
So we'll continue on pursuing that?
Right.
And keep it on the agenda of this unfinished business?
And off-site evidence storage could be part of that, too, right?
I don't know, I don't know if they could legally do that.
That's down the road once we find out where we're going.
See what happens with a PSAP.
Person signing out for that property and the person receiving that property is very tricky.
Okay.
Very tricky. Next is new business session action, quarterly report on animal control services. Don.
Yes. Go ahead, Don.
We are working as a commission for the morus near past, though. It's already another year passed away a short time ago. And we're gonna purchase a bench with its name on it later to show respect for its strong holding in the shelter. We are still working with refurbishing the shelter, doing it with our own money from what we raised in fundraising. And we're over there cleaning out, organizing, and restructuring it in order to put that more appealing look to the people that come in. Sometimes the people come in, they just see a lot of clutter, and to me, it's like, it's like monk's way, you know? You gotta be open ear and you think better, you feel better, you feel your emotions. So we are working on that. Human education is a huge factor at the animal shelter. We're working with Shore Public in order to deliver more information to our communities in Brantford, New York, Brantford, on caring for the animals properly and what they should do. They're planning that they have to care their animals up for adoption. It's always a heartbreaking event for any people that really care for their animals. We started our educational school center in, in, or in, um, Everwood, Everwood rather, hospice at Brantford Hills, to provide the care of the litter shelter animals. That's essential with people that are very needy and, and are very sad. They need the comfort of animals. Because the animal shows if they care of it, if they connect with you, they're showing that unconditional love. Just like down in Florida, unfortunately, this happened with the disaster. They sent down about ten dogs to look care for these people. Working with Brantford Public Utilities and the possibility of incorporating their summer react, that is, summer recreation science in the public. And we continue to visit many of the schools we worked at, girls, boys' scouts, churches on the programs on a monthly basis to educate about animal welfare. We're looking to develop educational tablets on various topics of experience with senior dogs, staying in the room, your pets. We've got a shelter reading program that we're working on. We're gonna partner with one of the libraries in Brantford, as well as libraries, to set up programs where the children can read to the shelter animals. Animal care has started. Last year, it brought in eighteen thousand dollars. They take in about fifty kids per week. The others that come in following them will have to pay ten dollars per pet. We're also gonna be microchipping for twenty dollars. Uh, we received a grant for playing for life, it's a dog rehab. They come into the animal shelters, and this is happening across the United States. Uh, they help advance the skills of the handlers and trainers of the dogs, and they help them to understand the canine behavior within the context of the animals being in the shelter. So that will help them play for life for the animals and, and will help teach the dogs to play together in their contact with humans and will improve the possibility of getting adopted. Our fundraiser, our recent fundraiser in March, Posca Beer brought in thirty-two hundred dollars. The following fundraiser hasn't happened yet, but we've got tattoo fundraiser coming up, gonna get one hundred percent of the proceeds. We've got a wine-to-you chocolate fundraiser for June, a beer and wine at the Symblo Island Brewery, Food Truck Festival, Tater Festival, will be involved in our big Woodstock event, the music event that's on the town green in Brantford. Uh, last year, I think it brought in twenty thousand dollars. I think as far as this year, I think we're up to about twenty-five, I mean, as far as the, um, in the last four, five months in fundraising. Uh, we have started going to the off-site adoption sites of the Uncle Ted Co. This is how this paper is showcasing Ted of the Week. And, uh, we have, I'm just gonna give you the cumulative of the animals that we helped in our town. First of all, let me tell you that we've had a hundred and fifty complaints in, in North Brantford. Usually it's noise or people complaining that they're not taking care of their neighbor's dogs, that sort of thing, roaming, roaming animals. We've pounded twenty-six cats and forty-six dogs. Thirty of them had been redeemed, and we adapted out fourteen cats and seventeen dogs. Anybody know what I just did?
Thank you. Next item is review of request from EDC to join the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, Shoreline's been working, or the EDC's been working with Shoreline. They had a couple of events locally, and they, Shoreline has passed along an offer of eighty-three dollars for the remainder of the year through December in terms of joining. And typically, the town council has a membership in a, in a chamber, so they're requesting that council take action and membership.
We have a suggested motion.
I'll make the motion, be it hereby resolved if the North Brantford Town Council directs the town manager to sign any and all paperwork necessary to the town of North Brantford to join the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce further. It directs treasurer, finance director to utilize eighty-three dollars and twelve cents of the fund's original budget in twenty fifteen sixteen in the account one number one, four, uh, four six seven three, three oh eight, zero 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 zero. As dues for the North Brantford Chamber of Commerce to serve as prorated dues through December sixth, uh, twenty sixteen for the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce.
Subject. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duddy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelara?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is review of request from EDC to bid out broker services for fifteen ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Right, again, um, from the EDC, they've been working on, um, discussing this item. It's been undeveloped, and they'd like the council to consider the option of a, a commercial broker as a means to put it out for sale, market it, and sell it for sale, and see what happens, and, and go through a process that would have you as a, as a body interview and select a commercial broker to do that job. They feel it's probably going to yield better results than going back to an RFP process. And I think that that would give us the best of both worlds to be able to control to some extent, working with the broker to say, uh, this is the kind of developer we're looking for, and, uh, you know, have them do the legwork. And, you know, to have a broader reach than just a, a document that we try to reach developers that we, we get a list from, so.
We have a suggested motion.
Um, I'd like to do that. Um, the North Brantford Town Council hereby authorizes Michael T. Hoffs, town manager, draft language for the purpose of soliciting commercial brokerage services for the marketing and sale of fifteen ninety-nine thousand dollars as a mixed-use development project with a final approval from the town council and reviewed by the town attorney.
Second.
Discussion?
I have, I have questions. We, um... We had charettes, and we had ideas on the charettes. And we, many of us know what, what happened with all of that. And, uh, what Mike just said was, if it goes to, uh, possible developers, we have some input, some control over what might go in there. But I, but I have a somewhat different question, and I'm just curious because obviously I'm a newbie. Has, has the town council in the past voted to sell this property? Has, has this been something where the town council has said, "We're going to affirmatively vote to sell this property in our town"? And I don't know that that's happened.
I, I don't believe it's happened either.
Well, we, we sent out the RFP a year ago. The one response. We were gonna enter into some sort of discussion as to whether we're gonna do a, a purchase or a lease or what the situation was gonna be. So, and then, you know, we went through that process.
See, you know, with a real estate agent, it doesn't, so it's not gonna cost the town any money. And Michael, you will need to be added to the agenda if you think you're gonna pay a real estate agent to market this for us. So, um, you know, they're gonna come in, they're gonna set a price that they're willing to list it for. And that'll probably be a pretty close price to what, you know, 'cause real estate agents, you know, they're not gonna do something for nothing. So they're gonna be pretty sure that they can sell this property. So, I would be, you know, I would be okay with finding out what the commercial real estate agents, you know, two or three of them, think that it's actually worth. And then I think we could say, you know, do we wanna sell it for a dollar, or do we wanna sell it for two million dollars? You know, and then we still would have the right to reject any offer if, you know, if we wrote it that way.
We still would be under no obligation to sell it to somebody that wanted to put a gas station in or do whatever we didn't want, gone with that property.
'Cause I think, you know, if you do sell it, you know, you're gonna have no say other than the current zoning regulations on, as to what goes in there. But, you know, the only way I think you're gonna get a value of it is at least maybe talking to these agents.
Well, you know, when we had, uh, when we had the charettes, community came, uh, came together, and we've had this discussion before. And what came out of the, you know, charettes from the point of view of many of the people at, uh, at those sessions was not what the ponderance of the community seemed to want. You know, I understand that. Uh, I also understand that what some people want can't actually happen there. The, the physical space will not, will not permit it. Still, uh, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, is there actually consensus to sell this property? And certainly, I, I don't want it sold where, you know, the town is responsible for cleaning up the site in any, in any way, shape, or form. That, that was ludicrous.
Well, we may be responsible for that depending on what kind of response we have. I mean...
Then I, then I go back to Al's suggestion in the past many times. Clean up the site, put up a clean, uh, a clean piece of property if that's what the bill is to do.
Well, we don't know until, again, we go out and we get their opinion, so.
Didn't we put in a steep grant for the monies to try to clean out?
Yes.
We haven't heard anything.
No, un, unlikely. We have not officially had any word, but unlikely. Um, and, but there's also, you know, you could sell it as, as is, you know? I mean, you knock off, yeah, depending on what the proposal is, what the, what the offer is, maybe factor in that, that cleanup cost. And that, and you make it their, you make it their issue.
Also seeing what kind of response we have, I would like to see us, you know, we have a smattering of lots around town that we're not gonna be anything with. Perhaps we should get a value on them as well, and see how viable for sale they are. So we'll have to see what happens.
Well, you know, I, I drive down Route eighty and I, I looked, and that, that piece of property remains the only possibility of having open space, green space, uh, in the North Brantford site. And, uh, I'll, I'll tell you right now, I don't want anything there regardless of what it is that doesn't, uh, make this town look attractive.
Everybody agrees with that.
I agree with you, George, and, you know, and I've been, you know, vocal about it. I, I don't wanna sell it. I just feel that, you know, we wouldn't have five votes to say they don't wanna sell it now 'cause they, everyone has this, not everyone. Some people have this ridiculous number in their head that they think it's gonna go for. And it's like, oh, I'll get, you know, two million dollars or a million dollars, and, uh, and that's gonna, you know, that's gonna pay for an architect to build a new high school, you know? And, uh, but, once it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah, forget the million dollars, we might, uh, pay part of the remodel of the police department.
So, you never know. But I think that, you know, talking to commercial agents, they have a pretty good idea what, what it would be worth. And, you know, they're not gonna list it. They're not gonna waste their time and list it for a number that they don't think they can get. So if we did the first step, done again, you know, then two, might be hard to get someone to come in. If it's like, well, if we don't like the number that you have, we're not gonna list it, but... Real estate agents have to do an awful lot of work for nothing in the hopes of getting a listing.
Yeah, that's for sure.
But since we're on the center of town there, when we drive that, you know, George, how come in our town, the bank along Route eighty is weeds, and the trees that were planted are dead? Is it like, oh, it's North Brantford, uh, nobody cares? That's disgusting. The dead trees should've been, you know, whenever you're, whatever you do, anything. I had a subdivision in town and I had to plant fifty pine trees, and one of them died, and Carol Zed told me I had to replace it like five years later, you know? And it was 'cause deer was rubbing their antler on it. But, you know, the, the state comes in, that's a mess down there. That's an absolute mess. And it's so steep, you know, there should've been retaining walls so that Franny could've mowed it, and it was nice. It's, it's horrible. Unbelievable. And, and the trees dying is, is, is ridiculous. You know, but the reason they died, they didn't put any lom in there. You know, it's all crushed stone and it's just disgusting. The state highway, the, the state DOT better hope they don't come before this board with me still sitting here 'cause they're not gonna have a fun night. But that, that's disgusting, and it's so, it's passed, we can't do anything about it.
They'll be here soon to see what kind of trees you want at the bridge, at the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. See what kind of dead trees we want, maybe we'll just move the ones from down there.
Well, Michael, just to get back on track, um, would it be hard to do an RFP to clean up that site?
To clean?
Fifteen ninety-nine.
Fifteen ninety-nine.
Fifty-nine. Environmentally?
Yeah.
Raise the buildings and clean the site up? No, I don't think it would be that hard, no. To issue out.
That way we could get an idea of what it's going to cost?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do it. You could do it. I just, I think the, it was based on the information I had for the, for the steep grant that is about quarter of a million, but you bid it, you gave, that's the true way to get a number.
Now it'd be a good time to bid it.
Yeah, very good.
We could do that.
Good, and you know what? That really needs to be done again, George, driving down the road. The old town, not the old, old town hall, not the center school, that town hall, that looks dis, that goes with the dead trees. The paint's all peeling, the roof is, is, you know, shot. We either need to fix it and use it or knock it down.
Well, last week you were suggesting turn it into a police station and it sounded good to me.
It's a brick building. Not good. Big side, not good.
So therefore, let's, let's need a...
That might be a good idea, my RFP, or, because when you look at that out, it doesn't mean we're going to hire one of the guys, it's, oh, man, it's five hundred thousand.
This motion is on the floor right now. So there's, the motion is on the floor right now with this.
All right, no further, this is roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
No.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Angeloni?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
No.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Okay, could we make a motion to add item J? J? What was the final count on that motion?
I think it was four or five, did not pass.
Five. Thank you.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item nine J. An item would be an RFP to clean up fifteen ninety-nine Jackson Road.
Right, to demolish, do the cleanup and demolish.
Demolition and cleanup.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on. Next item is review of job.
That's to amend the agenda.
We had a motion to amend the agenda, somebody second?
Yes. Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is review of revised job description for account clerk one A assessor's office. Should we have a motion to go out for an RFP?
What's the, item J?
Yes, so this item D is the revised description to get the account clerk A in the assessor's office is, has a submitted her papers for retirement. This is obviously a critical function and there's only a two-person, two-person team in that office. So what you have before you, I hope and am requesting from the town council, that you approve and let this, this position go through. And what you have before you is in yellow, the revised lang, the new language, and strike out of the old language for this job description for the account clerk. David's also here, if you have any, have any questions with respect to that position. I don't think the, it appears that it hasn't been touched or looked at since ninety-six and that's some of the, some of the systems like the TAR, tax rule system, the ATR, doesn't exist and so we just kind of upgraded the technical language there.
Any approval or just a consensus?
I'd like a formal approval.
I'm going to approve the job description. Second, I can do motion to approve the job descriptions, if you mind.
What's second, Matt?
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to waive our hiring freeze?
Approve the hiring. Okay. Make a motion.
I don't know what we do or we don't. Do we?
No.
I thought it was for all hires.
I thought too.
So if it's for all hires, then you do need a motion. It's a simple motion, let's go. Who approves the replacement of the clerk's position in the assessor's office who is retired? Second, Matt. Discussion?
Technical, do we have to amend the agenda since it wasn't on the agenda to add that? Just so that we don't?
No, it's just, it's not a special view.
Well, it doesn't really fall under the job description.
It would be safer to amend the agenda.
Okay, so.
All right, Rose, amend the agenda.
All right, well, I just don't want to have to come back at the next meeting and fix what we did.
Next Tuesday, we'll have four in a row.
Right.
So I will make a motion to amend the agenda, add item nine K approval of hiring for account clerk one A assessor's office.
Second. Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Board of Education technology lease.
We didn't actually vote on the approval of the hiring though.
No, that was just to amend the agenda somehow and get down to it.
Nine K?
Yeah.
Okay.
Annually, the Board of Ed goes out for a technology lease, which pays seventy thousand dollars a year over a four-year span. I solicit a variety of vendors that are used banking, financiers, and the results you see in front of you in the corresponding purchasing power that that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars payment translates to this year TD equipment. This is after the second year in a row, they come in with very favorable rates. You notice at the rate of twenty-three, four percent over the four-year deals. Our recommendation is to proceed with the TD equipment. I did run it by the town attorney and Pat today advised me that he is fine with the vehicle.
So the Board of Ed budgets?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand every year?
Right, multiple, because there's, at every one, at every one time, there's four years running.
Oh, okay, that's what I, okay. So they actually are spending two eighty a year?
That would be a correct statement.
Okay.
Suggested motion?
I'll make the motion to hereby resolve that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution and authorizes Michael T. Paul as town manager and Anthony P. Esposito, junior CPFO, treasurer, finance director, to sign the necessary paperwork to enter into a lease purchase with TD equipment financed to acquire two hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and three cents net of fees of technology for the Board of Education based on a four-year advanced funding interest rate of one point three four percent per annum, subject to the review and approval by the town attorney's office.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelara?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Financial report?
Financial report, yes, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year. Fortunately, it remains unremarkable. Again, the numbers typically focus on the very top number, the property taxes, right on target with last year. The overall revenue remains ahead of last year while the expenditures are behind last year. So it's a phenomenon that hopefully will continue for many years. The wetlands obviously being the largest of the over expenditures related to the issue at the state, and coming to the end of the fiscal year, you'll see probably on your July agenda, a use of contingency money to balance that, start and out the rest. We will adjust the balance internally amongst, some departments have some savings and start with the year entrance first probably. There's some on tonight's agenda, but the majority will be in July and I'll wrap up the fiscal year.
Why are operating transfers so high?
Good question. Things like the ambulance fund. You budget in the ambulance, you look at the ambulance department, halfway down, you see two hundred thousand dollars budget with zero expended because you budgeted a, but in reality, it functions as an operating transfer. So it gets sent out to the ambulance fund. The insurance reserve, you budgeted in the insurance section, but it actually functions as an operating transfer. So you'll see a budget transfer to make that marry up at the end of the year. It's budgeted one place, but in reality, it functions as an operating transfer.
So why would our operating transfers out mirror what we know we have to transfer?
Well, you lose the, if you budgeted an operating transfers, you wouldn't know that the ambulance cost you X.
No, 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 but I mean, if we know we're budgeting ambulance that we have to transfer X number of thousands of dollars in there.
Right.
And, and our insurance was X number of dollars, why wouldn't we make our operating transfers out?
Because it'd be one number, you see one number, you wouldn't know that a piece of it was ambulance, a piece of it was insurance, a piece of it was self-insurance reserve, you know what I mean? It's kind, it's, if you wanted, if you want to keep that integrity to know what your ambulance, you budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for the ambulance, you had a lot of one thing, one number, operating transfers, you'd lose that.
No, no, you can still, what I'm saying is that if you have two hundred thousand for ambulance, four hundred and fifty thousand for insurance, two hundred thousand for something else, so now you have eight hundred thousand dollars that you know you're going to have to do in operating transfers, you still have it budgeted in those areas, but your operating transfers would have a number of eight hundred thousand because you know that that's what you're going to have to transfer.
Can't in both places though. You need to have it in the ambulance department or the operating transfer department. You can't list it four places. So we list it in, as the ambulance department in that example for the budget purposes, but it functions as an operating transfer. Then you'll do a budget transfer probably in July or August to move that money from the ambulance that operating transfers, so that that line balances out. It's a matter of how you may want to budget the money. If you want to show it as an insurance cost in the insurance department, in reality, it functions as an operating transfer, but you show it as an insurance cost, you have a true picture of your insurance department, come budget. If we wanted an operating transfer, you wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be an ambulance anymore, it'd be down in that one number at the bottom.
Well, no, I mean, I see you have two hundred thousand for ambulance.
Correct.
There, but then you have six hundred thousand down in operating transfers out, so aren't you, you're listing it twice there in the budget?
No, it's, the budget is, well, the six hundred thousand doesn't include the ambulance.
Ah, okay.
It's budgeted as well, and ambulance for the time being, and then it will move it down to married.
Ah, okay, that's, that's, I was confused.
Anthony, speaking of the ambulance?
Yes.
One of the new ambulances?
Yes.
Were having problems in the shop for, and?
What's going on with that?
Is it under warranty or?
Uh, they, everything so far, no cost to town. But it's been, to say it's been a nightmare has been an understatement. The town, the fire commission, they suggest that they're pressed to invoke the lemon law type situation based on the number of times you've conducted service. And my contact with the state, basically, emergency vehicles don't fall under lemon law. Another provision that they kind of, that...
How come, like, this wasn't brought to the council's attention at all? I mean, to me, it seems like something we should know.
Is this the third ambulance?
Yeah.
No, this is the, that's the first one that got remounted on the AUV. Historically, there's been some issues with this car from the beginning. If this was the vehicle, you recall that the chassis, the frame had to be cut down in North Carolina, I believe it is, and that ruined the geometry of the rear axle. It then had to go back down to North Carolina after it was up here for a while. They fixed the body issues. It seems to have an issue now where it will buck, for lack of a better word, as you're going down the road. I was on contact.
That sounds complicated.
Yeah, it's, it's actually trying to put an ID in it, it's, you know?
Yeah.
So as of today, the latest, there's been a seri, I mean, the folks in Nummeg International and North Haven are dealing with it and they are as, I don't want to say fed up with the vehicle as we are, because it goes over there regularly, as you said.
Has this cost the town money?
Uh, they...
Or does the ambulance?
Oh, right, it's, we've lost money.
I have a question then. What do we have, one ambulance operating?
We have two, correct.
Okay, because I had a neighbor last night and I stood outside for, it took twenty minutes before the ambulance came for that person. And I can't understand.
They were both on calls.
Pardon?
They were both on calls.
Yeah, well, then, I don't understand, then, you, that was a matter of life and death. Why don't we have a backup town or something? I stood there, I stood there for twenty minutes waiting for the ambulance with that poor wife and that husband who was on the floor in the bathroom because there was no ambulance. I don't understand that. I thought we had a backup.
Then we have AMR, like...
But the closest, the closest vehicle last night was our car coming out of the hospital.
But, so, in other words, why don't we have like a backup, like more?
We do, a backup ambulance is in a shop.
Think of the word medcom.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, you know, I'll say something, last night was very scary. It took twenty minutes for an ambulance.
We have mutual aid and that's what the medcom situation is, basically.
It's because of medcom?
No, I wouldn't say it's because of medcom, it's because no cars available. The closest car in that particular situation was our car coming out of the hospital. That's what, they're, both of our ambulances were on calls. And you're right, if there was a third car, could we have staffed the third car? Perhaps, you know, the second and third car on a calling basis, but nighttime typically if people are around, we would have been able to take the third car.
Don't we have rescue that's capable of transporting?
Negative.
So what's, what's?
How often does something like this happen? Where we're...
Both ambulances are out?
Yeah, both ambulances are out.
I'll tell you, it was twenty minutes.
I believe it.
Yeah, there's another call, is this something that...
I don't, in front of me is that how many times, there's three, I mean, we do have three ambulances, there have been times when all three have been on calls.
Yeah.
Number of time, I couldn't be the exact number without, you know, checking with keeps or tracks all the...
Should we get the town attorney involved with getting this ambulance?
Well, that's what the instance was and not sure where it ended up.
I think that's where it has to go because it's not going to fall under the lemon law and I think the commission, fire commission is, is at a point where it's done.
But they can't hire an attorney without coming to the council. So this should be brought to the council, I would think.
Right.
And we take action on it.
I think they're going to, they're going to need Pat's help to do that.
Quite honestly, this is the first time I've ever heard of an ambulance being off the road or going through all this.
I've heard it for a little while and then I got a few more calls about it and I think it should have been brought to us a lot sooner.
I agree.
Well, it's only evidenced it last night, there's obviously a problem.
Well, last night it was service, but both were on calls.
Right.
And the third ambulance was...
It's in a repair shop all the time.
In Nummeg International.
But again, it's kind of just a political situation, but we do have contract with the AMR, correct?
Not contract, it's part of a mutual relationship.
Mutual aid, thanks, but the name just happened not being there as well.
Well, the question from my mind is, is this in fact a fluke? Or do we have a record of this happening with some frequency that ought to be a source of concern?
Well, we pay for an ambulance that's been in the shop, so that's a problem. That's our problem.
But is that?
Yeah.
The, the problem for that? I mean, we, I recognize that it's a problem.
Would certainly help to have a third ambulance.
Yeah.
Correct. So we call it.
And that's why, that's why it exists, sure.
Correct. That, that used car we bought, the 2008 car, really has saved us. Because the amount of time that four has been in the shop, this third car has actually got a lot of duty use and really is, uh.
So what do we need to do, where do we go from here?
I think the council would have to, you know, authorize Pat, because I think the commission, and I, maybe Anthony can concur, but they would like to engage Pat to sue. I mean, it's a, it's been, it's well documented, it's a lemon, I don't know where it goes, where, where suit goes, but this thing has been a lemon since it came up off the line. And there's plenty of documentation?
Yeah, but how does that fix the ambulance?
Right.
It doesn't.
Right, so I mean, we need to.
We need to.
Is the ambulance fixable?
As of today, the, the latest dilemma, or as it was described to me, was that they have a data line, a wiring harness type data line that captures data. The way they typically work it is they drive the vehicle, they get a computer file of what the vehicle's doing, they ship it to international's national headquarters, the engineers there review it. They determine what the problem is and then take it back to the local folks to pick, fix part A or B. Well, today the issue that they have determined was that the wiring that does this data line, probably when the vehicle became from a cabin chassis to an ambulance and the wiring was attached to the back of the ambulance, the wiring connection, according to the books today, wasn't done properly. It caused an intermittent signal in this data line, which then could cause an intermittent signal in the operation of the engine. At this point, I'm not even sure what they're saying, it's true, to be honest with you. I mean, they've said everything, every time, and the guy said the same thing, I'm not going to guarantee it's fixed. I told you this seven times already. Now, first it was the injectors, then it was, then it was the throttle, then it was, everything they said, this is going to be fixed. And they're basically saying, you know, we're, we're as fed up as you are with this car. I talked to the regional, I was on the phone, we could have to go with a regional rep that covers New England. He happened to be walking into a meeting in Chicago when I tracked him down. I said, better alert your people, this, this is getting ugly now because the town attorney's involved. I said, we're fed up, you know, I know what you got to do, if there's a new engine, swap out the whole cabin chassis, whatever it takes, we're going down that road. So I said, no, we'll, we'll try to fix it, you know, make it right for it, because again, they're, they're as, as fed up with it as we are, that it's constantly over North Haven. And they, they've, they've shifted to various parts of Nubeg, they have dealer, they have a sister operation in Torrington that the car's been out a couple of times, they work up there. They have a sister operation, I believe it's in Windsor, or that neighborhood, for the car to end up there to get worked on. And they all seem, oh, this is the fix, this is the fix, this is the fix, and then it's not the fix, it does the same thing. And it does it for them as well. So they're happy to see that when they bring it to their place, it actually does the bucking for them, it's not we're going crazy kind of thing. So that's where it sits. But it is an issue that does require intervention. Your, your point is right, is that going to fix the ambulance? No, I think it gets, gets there maybe a heightened level of attention and, you know, get Pat involved, make a nice letter from the town attorney and go from there.
Well, is there some way that we can request, can you get a ambulance like on loan while this one is being repaired? That they?
Well, the problem, see the problem is, it's, it's two different people.
Okay.
AAV is, it's the ambulance, an AAV ambulance they use an international cabin chassis for. So you can't go to AAV and say, give me a new ambulance to use, unless it's not my problem, it's the international's. That's where your, your issue was, you know what I mean? So it's not that non-stop shopping kind of thing. They would, if AAV built a cabin chassis in the box, you say it's not working right, give me, give me a new ambulance. That would be one of the clear. But in the case of this vehicle where the cabin chassis is one manufacturer and the box is another manufacturer, who'd block the ambulance from? It's two different people.
But it's not a box problem, this sounds like electrical.
Right, it's the cabin chassis the problem, so it's, it's an international problem, so you really can't go to AAV and say, give me an ambulance to use because your, your things not working.
Yeah, but we didn't buy, did the town split it? Did we buy?
No.
So we, so we bought, right, so they bought an international chassis and sold it to us.
As part of the spec was international.
Yeah, so they own, they own, you know, they, they, they got some liability there.
Which, and Chief Seward has all along been copying the, the person who blocked the car through. Professional, uh, Keship is his name out of New York. And as of this last go run after the fire commission meeting, he did send an email saying that the fire commission has to advise the town manager to proceed with legal action for the town. So he's been in the loop for the whole thing and they've tried from the national level, because AAV builds a lot of ambulances and use a lot of international cabin chassis. So he's trying to get their corporate level involved to say, hey, there's a problem here, we're going to stop using your cabin chassis here, they'll go freightliner or something, let you guys get these, you know, issues resolved. That, that's where it sits.
For how long is this remaining under whatever their warranty is?
I'll be lying to you, I'll check it, it's 2013 cabin chassis.
I mean, we, we could come to a point where this is still dragging on.
Right.
And the warranty has expired and I guess we're holding, holding on to equipment that's non-functional.
I can test it, I'll hold exactly the answer to that, when they want to.
I think we need to know that, uh, there's.
So back to the financial report.
Thank you.
How do we read this, the health insurance? Yeah, so we're almost in July 1, how do we do?
Good, we got $800,000 in the bank. We've taken in $5.2 million of revenue, went to that fund. We spent about $4.4 million through the end of May, so $800,000 to the good.
So that was very good.
Yeah, it was a good year. It was a good year and, you know, knock on wood. And there were some claims that fell into the stop loss, some catastrophic claims, some, you know, employees and family members and the like. But that's the purpose of having stop loss insurance, is that you don't expose yourself to that risk.
Okay.
Next item is contingent to the appropriations, Public Works truck engine.
Uh, pretty self-explanatory, the Public Works probably about two years ago purchased a utility van to be used by the maintenance personnel that we recently put full time beginning of this year. And subsequently, the motor blew. And this is a cost that they've enrolled and have received to replace the motor instead of here.
Does it have floors in it? Is it worth, like, honestly, is it worth doing this?
We have no choice.
Why do we have no choice?
Because we have no trucks. We're down three trucks now. We're not going to get another truck, we're not going to buy it. This one needs to be coming up for replacement for another couple, three years.
What do we have, three trucks?
We've got one ton and we'll pick up inside for it to get the twenty thousand mark. There's a seventy, it's a nineteen eighty-seven, but.
Are we replacing them?
How, or not? We've got the capital money.
Recall, we haven't done the CIP program yet, so there might be not particularly, August 23.
That's August?
Typically.
Dan, in a nutshell, we bonded so much money, we have no money for anything else. Oh, I got your birdland project taken care of, right. So there you go.
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account 101-4703-7600000 and transfer into the appropriate account as soon as possible for the following purpose, free to replace motor and engine, a two-year warranty on the 2001 van for $1,1310.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
How many miles are on it for him?
I don't know.
Says here eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes. Just a question on this, um, does this have to go to bid? I know this is a quote.
I go fifteen thousand on a bid.
You go no bid to fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Appropriation transfer.
As we come to the end of the year, we're trying to balance some of the accounts. Uh, the right-hand side is the short ball. Uh, some of the larger ones, you see the registrar's three-ten account, $2,400. There's some more state mandated training that wasn't budgeted. Towards the bottom of the page, you see the sewer works, $2,200 to rental, for the right-of-way clearing. The rest of it, the rest besides that are basically the small items, just balancing.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Approval tax refunds?
Some move.
Second.
Mayor. Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Next is item J, RFP to demolish and clean up 1599 box number.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue an RFP for the demolition and cleanup of 1599 box number.
Second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Next item is approval to hire Count Kirk 1A.
So vote.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
So mayor, appropriate insurance, have we sent the ambulance to the county? Make a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Can I make a good motion?
Uh, I think we have to add it to the agenda.
Can I make a motion to?
L.
Nine J.
L.
Nine L.
L. Nine L. To have the town attorney contact town manager, the fire chief and get all the appropriate information to start legal action against.
I'll second that.
Or ambulance, what is it, ambulance?
Medic board.
Ambulance.
Medic board.
Medic board?
Medic board.
Okay, we move to, um, next item, which is, I request the town attorney to start action on medic board. Legal action on medic board. Literally voting not, adding it to the agenda or approving it?
Approving. Power of approval to go to.
We, we didn't vote to amend the agenda.
No. This isn't an agenda, somebody.
Al, okay.
Al seconded, the music, they amended.
Right, Anthony made the motion, Al seconded to amend the agenda.
This is M or this is?
Down.
Down.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Now, this is the same, uh, request of the town attorney for the medic board. Problems for, for action. Move through, uh, require the manager of the town attorney for appropriate legal action if he deems necessary.
Second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes, before you guys leave.
Do you have an M?
I have an M. And thanks to Dan Arman, um, because he reminded me of this. You're welcome. Right. I want to amend the agenda for discussion and real quick action on the leak at the intermediate school.
Second.
I keep forgetting to bill it.
Yeah.
Dan keeps reminding me, so. And it'll be quick.
So we got to take a roll call, though?
I'm really getting on current management school.
Right.
What's that?
Roof.
Um, leaks.
We're just not sure where it's coming from.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Candelara.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Okay, we're on now, do you get no current management school?
Okay, um, I haven't had time to get there, but I've heard from several people that it's bad. And it's coming, you know, maybe the roof, maybe through the wall. So what I was thinking, you know, we couldn't get in the school at six in the morning with them. Anyway, what I was thinking is, why should we let Newman architects and turn a construction off the hook? I, I, I wanted us tonight, let's start there before we spend their own money and see if Michael can't get Newman to come look at it now. You know, because a lot of the key to leaks is, okay, we see this in, and I understand it's in a wall of maybe an assistant principal or something, and it's like coming down the wall and the paper and the, you know, sheet rocks coming off and everything else. So, um, I think that we should go to Newman, see if you can't get, because Newman did that, right? Newman architects did that?
Correct, yeah. How long ago?
It doesn't, uh.
Doesn't matter.
I want to ask them first, saying, guys, you know.
I think you're responsible, the town, to let it go on for as long as it's been going on.
Right, because it's leaked from day one.
It's not so much the town as the Board of Education.
Right, but we need to, we need to address.
Right.
So, so all I was looking for was for you guys to agree that Michael should at least make contact with it and we'll work back at the next meeting if he got a, yeah, we'll come look at it, or, you know, go scratch. The leak, because I mean, you know, then we'll know that we're all on our own. They designed the building, there was an issue with the windows not being installed properly and they had to reinstall them and the brick joints and everything else. So, you know, the architect may have, may be able to walk in and say, oh, this is going on. But, that's it.
So it's notorious ratings.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have to vote on it, we just, like, a consensus that Mike could pursue that.[1601.21] So, I don't think we have to vote on it, we just, like, consensus that Michael could pursue that. I'm sorry to dump it on you, but today, somebody has to.
Call him, Paul?
Yeah.
It's worth it.
See where you go.
It's worth it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item is citizen statements and petitions.
Beverly Harrison, Zarski, Dr. Frank. I would like a straight answer from somebody. Why you are hell-bent on selling Wallfield? 1599, it's due date, you're right, it is. Can anybody give me an answer?
Nobody's selling it.
Yeah, Doug, I, I wouldn't say that we're hell-bent on it. We'd like to get a value of it.
But why you even consider selling?
Nope. Well, I never mentioned, or I never said that we're looking to sell it. We're looking for an RFP, is what we voted on, to clean up the place. And we're looking at also to see what the value of the place is.
But we voted that down, five to four.
Yes.
Which was voted down.
So, you, you're looking for the value of the place, so you are considering, you might want to sell it.
Well, it got voted down tonight.
Now, my, I have a question. Why I hesitate to see you sell it? In my opinion, it's a ball, it could be a ball field. It, it's still a park, it's a practice field. It could be used for the town. And this end of town, we have nothing else there. Now, the park town on 139, but for kids east of the center, all the way to Guilford line, all the way to the center of town, they could come in on bicycles for practice or stuff like that. It could be used and not have to ride hell and gone over to the high school, area school, Wallfield, or all the way to off.
Well, that's what Counselor Miller and then Counselor Rose said they'd like to see it stay green, you know? In so many words.
Well.
Not, not sell it. But I don't think anybody up here said to sell it.
No.
Some people, some people looking for a value, what the value of it is. We're looking, we're looking to clean it up and dress it up.
Okay. No, it shouldn't be dressed up. It is usable for sports, you know, to a point, maybe, maybe have to have a, a Little League field anymore. You take the old center school lot of there, knock that hill over back, I'm not just sure how far back that goes till it hits the carload property line here down there on the road. But, uh, you could, you could extend that field quite a ways, you got the, was basketball court up here. And, and sell the old, uh, well, the, the, Tom Hall, with the brick building down there, and get something back on it. But, but the field, leave it for, for whatever. It, it's the last piece of space you've got in town. And this end of town, you've got all kinds of ball fields in Northford. Were we blacked out here?
What? No. Hang on a second.
Huh?
All we've been doing up here is discuss, discussing our options. And our options are, leave it as it may, get an evaluation, um, or start having to generate some tax dollars, which is common, that's really, that's all we've been doing. That's what this whole process is.
Pick a police station or some other stupid thing.
No. So, that's what we're, what we're doing this time.
Well, I don't play, you know, okay, have it in front of you, but think twice before you sell it.
Within the.
In my opinion. I mean, that was a playground for me when I was a kid. Most of you would still feel the green in your glasses high, but right now, I'm back that way.
I don't know what that, but anyways, like Franny said, the old, the old administration building, the old town hall is not of any value.
Yeah.
The center school, we know, is not of any value. So, you know, the best is to raise them, you know, and clean up the whole area down there, and then we're at, we're at zero again.
No, my, my feeling, I'm not, I'm not on the ball as much as I was when I was younger. And I just hate to have it sneak something by me.
Now, we, we, we definitely, I'll call you if we.
I would appreciate that.
If it ever, if it ever goes up for sale.
And, and I got another thing.
No matter where you are.
Huh?
No matter where you are. I'll put a phone call.
Yeah, I'm not going to be very far. Listen, the other thing has come up. The memorial field originally was Coulter Field. Or Coulter Memorial Field. All of a sudden, it's Memorial Field, no more Coulter. Now, Coulters were big in getting that swamp field for the, for the tennis courts and all that. Why was their name taken off of that field?
Well, it's, it's not, it's still Coulter Field. We're just doing renovations to Memorial Field in the front. That, that's what, that's, that's what they're referring to when we say Memorial Field in the tennis courts.
Well, there's no sign there with Coulter on it.
I'm, I don't know. I haven't seen a sign that says Memorial Field either, there. I don't know.
But, but that name should be, they were instrumental in that field. They're instrumental in a lot of things in this town. You know, there's few of them left around.
Yeah.
My wife happens to be one.
Memorial Field, I think, is just, they called it the tennis courts and the basketball courts. But Coulter Field is, is basically, from what I was told, is the baseball field.
Well.
Is that true?
But, I, I, you know, we, we would like to see the name there with the field, Coulter Memorial Field, whatever it is. And it, it, I think some of the family has talked to different ones, but it's sort of, you get shoved aside, you know? So, um, I did want to bring that up. And Mike.
I remember years and years ago, there was a sign somewhere.
There was a sign there when we were playing Little League, and it was Coulter Field.
Yeah.
Yeah. It started out Coulter Field, because he was principal in getting that going. And, and then it's been switched to Memorial Field.
Maybe our next.
Well, it's still referred to as Coulter Field as far as Little League is concerned. When they schedule, it's Coulter Field, they always refer to it as Coulter Field.
Do they?
Little League does.
Well, I think we're missing a sign on, it used to be a sign on the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, remember that.
Right. Okay, Mike, I'll wait for you to call me if there's any thing come up on this.
You got it.
Thank you.
Moving to the jury. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, you know, those older guys take a little longer to get here. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you all. It's been a tough night. It's, it's like being a parent, wanting to give your kid everything they need, but you can't afford to do it. And you've had some good discussions, you're making some sound decisions. You're not going to open the cookie jar too quick. And, and again, it's never easy. It's not a fun job lately. And, and like Al says, don't wait for the economy to get better. You know, Connecticut is downsizing drastically. My neighbor's leaving me, she's been next to me for years, she's going south. And she's sold her house kind of in loss, she didn't want to put any money in it. She still has money left over to buy the house she wants in South Carolina in cash. So, I mean, we're, it's just impossible to live here almost anymore. And, and I don't know how young kids are going to do it. I mean, uh, we're here because my grandkids are in this state. But I tell you, it's sad. So, I mean, you've got to deal with, with what you got, because there's not going to be an influx in this town to help you with your taxes. So, you've got to open that purse carefully. So, I do thank you for that. Now, I want to make one suggestion. Uh, Connecticut Military Department have a similar situation or a problem like you have. Uh, the National Guard needed a new armory, the Army Reserve needed a new armory. Now, Bradford might need a new police station, Bradford might. What happened is, they got creative. And along 91, now you see a nice armory, but it's coexisting armory. They pulled their resources and they were able to meet their specifications without either of them going deep into debt. If you're going to re-regenai, regionalize with Bradford, you've got to do some serious study. What's the building's going to be, who can put up half the money? It might be a win-win situation, because it might cost half as much to each town. So, you've got to think outside the box. Look for the money, but look long-term. I mean, granted, the things at the police station shouldn't go ignored. But you can't spend a lot of money there if, if a year from now, you're not going to be in there. So, you need the long-term picture, the short-term picture, and you've got to be physically smart, I'll say that. Marie, 20 minutes? Believe it or not, that was traumatic to you, but that's not a bad time. You have to understand, you've got to go out to Radio Shack and buy a scanner. You shall applaud these gentlemen for the hours they're away from their families. They are going constantly to the max.
I was not criticizing, believe me, I have nothing but praise.
You were frustrated.
I have nothing but praise for the volunteer firemen in this town.
Right.
I was frustrated for the, for my friend who was having, was lying on the floor.
Who do you think mansels ambulances? Once, the first ones busy.
It's a situation that's not the personnel.
It's, it's not the personnel.
It's not the personnel. I can't characterize what she's saying as a criticism on what the, their.
But the situation, you have to understand the bigger picture.
I understand the pic, the bigger picture is that we have a, an ambulance in a repair facility.
Yes.
That's the bigger picture, it's not the, not the personnel.
But technically, you only need two crews on, ninety-nine point nine percent, and you have ambulances for two crews.
Okay.
You have the third spare. You just hit it a bad time, and I, my son has a scanner, we hear it all, and, uh, so, I mean, 20 minutes is not bad. If you're rounding up, they volunteer to go from his home to respond to your situation.
And I said that the firemen were there, very quickly, the fire engine was there.
But who do you think mansels second ambulance?
We know, but.
Well, I, I'm not talking about, I have nothing but the highest praise.
Okay. Well, I want to make sure that you weren't taking it out on them.
No, I am not.
Nobody.
All right. Uh, the other thing was, Al hit the nail on the head. You get what you pay for. And you paid for intermediate, what school's the waterfall?
Right. All right, Bradford Intermediate.
So, now, guess what? You got the lowest bid back then, and you're going to pay and pay and pay if you don't get that, somebody to, to fess up for the lousy work you did here.
Isn't that being visibly responsible? You go ahead and you go get bids, and perhaps you take the lowest, and that's something you would avoid.
Let me go back to something Al pointed out, a little history here, because I come here in the office. Al pointed out the raked bricks. Remember that, Al?
What are you talking about?
Okay, see, you don't know, do you?
He wasn't on, he wasn't on, so it's not bad. The rake, the rake bricks were, were something that we called out a long time ago, and Al said that.
Yeah.
And that was found out that nobody really does that in New England.
On an exterior building, they rigged, we joined up here.
Contractor refused to take any responsibility.
Extra to have it done.
We went on a site visit, Al found a window that was installed on, and went toe to toe with the county attorney.
So, again, you can't, you know, some of our own problems in this town are intergenerating, because if contractor says, I'm, I'm, you have to sign this letter, not hold them responsible, because we don't do that in New England. A raked brick is when you put the mortar in and then you dig half of it out so it looks more impressive. In New England, you don't do that, because when the water gets there, it pops the brick, when it freezes in that roof. He didn't want to do it, because he knows, but he was, he had to sign a letter right out.
Yeah. The contractors said, this is wrong, I shouldn't do this, and Newman architects, the great Newman architects.
So, you, you really need to know the long-term history, a lot of problems in town. They're self-generated, because somebody with an ego won't listen to a contractor. I mean, again, so that, it just kind of upstirs up my emotions, the fact that this problem might be created by somebody in one of our town commissions. Because the water might be getting in there now, after, because you just, you opened up that roof, when you just wanted it to slide down the front. Now, it has a place to go. Small idea.
History.
Small history.
Twenty-one.
But if you're going to be on this council, you have to know the big picture, which Al knows, and someone that's long sitting, uh, Mike knows, Joe knows. Um, my last idea.
See, the more you talk, the more I'm going to talk.
Uh, the parade. Why mess with a parade? It's money. How often do you need to change it? Have it the following Saturday, in the very few years that it might be an issue with the, with the rain or whatever. To start screwing around with the day and the time, it interferes with kids that are involved in other activities that we get another, North Haven has a fantastic parade on Saturday. If you mess with that, you'll have nobody here. Half our town goes to North Haven.
So, are you suggesting that we don't have rain day?
No, the following Saturday, what's wrong with that?
No, he says keep it on Memorial Day and have the rain days.
Because North Haven has theirs on Saturday, so we can't switch ours to Saturday, because North Haven.
And so, I mean, was, you know, we can't.
Whatever you want.
All right.
I mean, I can't remember the last thirty-something years, and the only rain day cancellation was that one.
We had the rain, we had rain, we had rain in the thunderstorm, you know, when we're, like, in Old Spruce Street, we had to frick and hustle our ass to get along the street. I know. So, I mean, I, this is, first of all, I can, so if, you know, keep it the same, everybody's used to it, it fits into the weekend plans, and make the following Saturday, tomorrow, Monday, and the rain day. Same time.
Sounds good.
You're not interfering with the same moniker at all, because it, believe me, it's troubling around, whether it's on that end of town. This end of town, you've got a little more room on armory.
I may not have to do that in another period.
Yeah, that's it. And again, I thank you for what you do, it's never easy, but you're, you know, you're, it's, you, we're, we're looking for that magic bubble of money to come to this town. It's not going to happen. And not today, not in the state, the state, the states, and the country. And, and so, you guys are looking pretty good compared to all the other people, well, compared to, like, our government, you know, it was our state governments and, and, and stress, and so is the national government. But you guys are kind of helping us here at town level, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion then, here?
I have two. Back to nine J, there've been some, numerous people have expressed an interest in buying some of the pieces of the old, old town hall, the tin ceiling, some of the hardwood in there. So, before we go, I'm knocking it down with a ball and crane, you might want to look at.
Right.
Saving some of the.
Yep.
Things that are very valuable in that building.
Even like urban miners or somebody like that.
Yeah, definitely. And secondly, under, uh, full disclosure, my son is now employed by the Park Recreation Department under, um, 8A, just in right now.
Bill said, it's time on Sunside Drive. Cliff kind of stole my thunder about the parade. Think, uh, he said it should be on Monday, rain day, and Saturday. And, uh, really, and I think we've got a little embarrassed this year that we didn't have a parade, that's, and it's a community event, I think we're going to have it, and, I don't know, one, two, all, yeah. Two other things. I was fortunate enough with the V, uh, the VFW to come out on Saturday before the, uh, 28th. And with the Boy Scouts, the two Boy Scout groups in town, 453 and 463. And we visited the cemetery, and they, their fresh fries, throw on the vets. Now, it was over like two hundred and, two hundred and seventy-five flags that they put down. And it was, it was a good event, at the Boy Scouts, John, Mr. Candelore, Reed Candelore, one of the scout leaders. It's a good event, the kids, I'm really proud of the kids, because they were into. Uh, one thing, on the other side of town, up in Yule Senior Center, those stones did some work, I don't know if it's an equal scholar, someone that I got to work on that, but it's, couldn't read it. And, uh, a week ago, you had the Flag Day. Very nice ceremony, it was a perfect storm, that, uh, it was online with the councilman, everybody was there, nice crime, nice speeches. I didn't believe the fire chief could play the back pipes. And he did. So, it was nice, and, uh, nice event. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for your effort to, to try to save the parade for this year.
Thank you. Next year, in better shape.
Uh, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Franny, you got it?
Motion?
You got to mention.
Second.
Second.
Mayor Duty? Sat, everybody? Okay, good.